Could we get everyone to take their seat, please? Mr. Beck is not listening. I don't normally use this, so I pardon. Could everybody take their seat, please? Thank you. I'd like to call the order. Calistoga Planning Commission meeting for July 10, 2019. May I have a roll call, please?
Note for the record that all commissioners are in attendance with the exception of Commissioner Abernathy, who is in attendance but is not participating due to a conflict of economic interest.
Thank you. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Moving on to C, public comments. Public comments is an opportunity to address the planning commissions of items of interest to the public that do not appear on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes. The commission cannot consider any issues or take action on items raised during public comment. Anyone for the good or the cause have any public comments besides what's on the agenda? Please feel free to come forward.
My name is Sally Hauck. I am a resident of Rancho de Calistoga. And while this doesn't pertain specifically to this, I've been wanting to address the planning commission for quite a while in the sense that have you considered putting a hold, shelving ideas and plans coming in until we find out what the impact is going to be on Calistoga from the places that are already under construction such as Silver Rose? And I don't know if they call it Calistoga Hills or one of them. But until we know what the impact is going to be with the water, the sewer, the traffic, I don't know how we can go ahead with all of these other developments that are being considered. Now, I am not against growth. I know we do need to grow, but we also need to do it cautiously so that we don't overextend our resources and negatively impact those of us that live at Calistoga. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that those comments would probably be more directed to the council than to the commission, but thank you.
Well, I've done both.
Oh, you have? Okay.
They told me to do both.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
My name is Catherine. I live at the Rancho, and it's very difficult to get through that intersection safely as it is. With this loop thing and all the traffic it's going to create, it's going to be horrendous. You go there on a commute time. You have to honk your way through that intersection, so I'm totally against this. And I know that means nothing to you because you're going to do it anyway, but I just want you to know, it's a horrible idea.
Thank you so much. Excuse me, if this is pertaining to what's on the agenda? It's not. Okay, thank you very much.
I'll be here.
You'll be for that one, too? Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm Penny, and I also live in Rancho. But what I'd like to address, and I have not heard what the outcome is, I noticed that Blackbird is back, but it's also temporary. And I know I'm repeating myself, I drive for Lyft. And what I hear from my passengers, and I've been doing this for a year, is that they love the quaintness of our town. They like the little shops downtown. I asked them specifically, would you rather go to a winery or a storefront to drink wine? And they go, of course, a winery with the beauty that we have here. So I know that at some point there was on the agenda about having a whiskey distillery and a brewery that would take over Blackbird. And this is my opinion is I think that we would be cutting off our nose despite our face to bring in places that you can find anywhere. People come here and have been, and myself, for the past 40 years, coming for the spas and coming to shop and ride our bikes, not to see, you know, you get a brewery in here down the street with a beer garden, you're going to have drunk people walking around town. We have children. We have parents with their strollers. And then a whiskey distribut- distillery? I'm just, I'm not getting the view, but I'm sharing my view of what I imagine Calistoga being. And that is to keep it quaint, to keep it small, not to make it look like anyplace else. Otherwise, why don't we just have a Starbucks and a McDonald's and, you know, a Kmart? So that's my three minutes and my opinions on the other things that are also in the, not to use a pun, but are in the loop.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to take the opportunity? See none, we'll move on. Adoption of the meeting agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt as presented?
Still moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Communications and correspondence staff.
Yeah, we have received 11 either letters or emails regarding the one item on the agenda tonight. Five of those went out and came in in time to go out in the packet, so they are included with the packet. Six additional letters or emails came in, some as late as today. Copies have been provided to you, and copies were placed on the table. I would note, we do have limited numbers of copies of things, so if folks could share as much as possible, that'd probably be really helpful, too. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Consent calendar, minutes approval from June 26, 2019. Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Still moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to public hearings. G, gas station car wash and retail space conceptual design review application, CDR 2019-2, review of conceptual design review application for the development of a gas station, convenience store, retail space, car wash at 2449 Foothill Boulevard. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. As noted, the item in front of you is a conceptual design review. The potential project includes a gas station, convenience store, car wash, and two additional 1,500-square-foot retail spaces. This project would potentially be located at 2449 Foothill Boulevard. This is at the intersection of Petrified Forest and Foothill Boulevard, prominent intersection in town. It's a 1.6 acre site. Little bit of background on the property. It's been developed at least since the '20s. At that time, a service station was built there. That building today and that site today is primarily used as the home of Calistoga towing. There's some other ancillary uses there as well. In 2007, there was a conceptual design review application for a Rite Aid. That application was reviewed at planning commission. It was not well-received and ultimately did not move any further. In 2017, the current applicant for this application applied for a use permit and design review for a project that's very similar to what's in front of you tonight. That was ultimately denied at a hearing in 2018. I'll also note that an MND, a mitigated negative declaration, was also prepared to go with that project at that time. So with the current application, the applicant has revised the plans and designs. Notably, they've eliminated the restaurant. They have reorganized the site plan. They've modified the architecture. They've now applied only for conceptual design review. The purpose of conceptual design review is essentially limited to getting feedback from the planning commission. There's no decision tonight. There's no entitlement requested at this time. So to go into a little bit more detail about the project, what's proposed? It's a 24/7 gas station service station, includes a car wash, convenience store. As I noted, there's two additional 1,500-square-foot retail spaces proposed. The current submission includes 39 parking spaces. As mentioned, the changes primarily are eliminating the restaurant, flipping the site around. They've moved the main building closer to the corner and put the canopy on the far side of the building away from Petrified Forest to provide some screening. And again, they've revised the arc architecture, and I think you could generally characterize the architectural revisions to be a little bit more rural in nature. The site is zoned community commercial. That's also what it's designated in the general plan. The community commercial district and zoning designation, or general plan designation allows for a wide array of uses. That does include service stations with a use permit and if it conforms with the development policies within the general plan. Speaking of the general plan, there's several other overlays and corridors that are relevant within the general plan. One of them is the Petrified Forest Gateway character overlay. Relevant provisions of that include: Commercial uses should serve travelers but also include limited services for residents. Development should not be strip mall-like or suburban. The scale of the development should not overpower its surroundings, and it should convey a village or rural character. This is also in the up-valley Foothill entry corridor as well as scenic corridor. Some of the relevant goals and policies from those include: Designs and uses should enhance the small-town rural character of the area. There should be wide setbacks and ample landscaping. Parking should be screened, and there should be small-scale and low-rise design. This potential development is also subject to our formula business policy and ordinance. In the community commercial district, service stations that are formula businesses are allowed with a use permit. I would note that we do have a ban on formula business restaurants and formula business visitor accommodations. In terms of development standards from the preliminary plans that have been submitted with this conceptual design review application, I will note that it is generally compliant in terms of setbacks, heights, lot coverage, parking. Design review, as this is not a project and they're not requesting an entitlement at this time, should they decide to apply for a use permit and design review application down the road, we would have to do a new sequo analysis associated with this. It is likely that some of the previous studies and things that were put together for the former project would still be useful. It would have to be updated because the project would have changed by that point and time would have passed, but some of that would still be valid information. Couple things that would be different, for example, is traffic impacts would probably be different as the restaurant's gone and the site has changed around a little bit. And with the reconfiguration of the site, there might be different lighting or aesthetic impacts as well. I'll also note when and if they apply for a use permit and design review, that's also when they would submit more detailed plans above and beyond what was provided with this conceptual design review. As previously mentioned, we've received 11 letters or emails regarding this project, also, you know, different phone calls and people coming into City Hall and ask about it. I think generally they can be summed up as they are all against the potential project. Concerns include potential environmental impacts, the appearance, the way this would look at the gateway to our city, concerns about light, noise, traffic, a preference for maybe another use at this location, concerns about formula businesses, et cetera. Finally, a couple things I'd note that weren't necessarily in the staff report. The ARCO, the gas station across the street, that predated our formula business ordinance and the entry corridor overlays and character areas, so it didn't necessarily have to comply with those at the time it was developed. Second, I think everybody's aware that we've had longstanding plans to signalize that intersection and that those plans are moving forward. I thought I'd just give you a brief status update of that. As I noted, it's been in the general plan for a number of years now. It's moving forward. The project's funded. The consultant is at about at the 50% design level, so it's getting there. My understanding from talking to our acting public works director today is that the next step, there will be a field meeting with Caltrans to sort of look at the plans, look at the site, and kind of see where things are going. The intent is to have a public meeting or some sort of community forum, probably sometime in August, to talk to citizens in the community about that intersection and about that stoplight. But it seems like that will move forward regardless of how this potential project unfolds. And then finally, I'd also note that this is, as we talked about, a sort of a resubmission. It's not a, they're not submitting for a use permit and design review, but this conceptual design review is sort of bringing back a project that was previously denied. I would note that they have been responsive, it seems, to some of the comments that were provided to them previously, and they did reach out and have a neighborhood meeting with the surrounding property owners a couple months ago. With that, applicant is here with his team. They've put together a brief presentation for you. That concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any question of staff at this point?
The only thing I have is I'd just reiterate that I thought that the staff report was extremely well-done, very complete.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I would ask the applicant if they'd like to come up and make their presentation.
Good evening. My name is Muthana Ibrahim. I'm with NY Architects Inc. On behalf of the applicant, I would like to thank staff for presenting the project tonight. Last August, we presented a project that include a restaurant and a standard gas station on the property. We heard your concern and listened to your comments, and we revised the project completely. The item that we did, this is, you know, this is the previous site plan that proposed for this project that include a restaurant, sit-down restaurant, and a typical gas station where the canopy is anchoring the corner of the property. The new project, this is the layout of the new project, the first thing we got rid of the sit-down restaurant. We also relocated the car wash away from the frontages in the back, and we provided approximately 20 feet setback from the surrounding property. We also relocated the canopy from the corner behind the building to screen the canopy from the public view of the intersection. With the building location at the intersection, the addition of the watchtower and the two plazas and the pedestrian walk around the building at the corner, we think that the proposed project convey a sense of arrival and signify the characteristic of the unique small visitor-friendly town. The parking spaces, the proposed parking onsite is more than the required. The staff report assumes that the convenience store parking required is one stall per 200 versus the retail would be one per 100, which that allow for, you know, more conservative solution of the parking. The entire, all the parking proposed is screened from the public view, oops, public view on the, from the street. We proposed hedge of landscape shrubs that screen the parking along Petrified Forest Road and also the same treatment on Foothill Boulevard. The building in the corner screened the parking from the visibility from the intersection. The proposed parking stall along the north property line, the city standard parking stall is 23 feet long, which is four feet longer than the 90-degree parking stall, which allow maneuvering of the vehicle, you know, better than, more than the 19-foot length. We can improve the site plan by providing a longer curb length along this, along the north property line and a pathway to allow passenger access their vehicle. Car wash drive-through. The current design allow six parking stalls behind the entry to the car wash and in front of the gates. We provided two gates for activation to the line to eliminate the possibility of stacking behind the gates. We can also link the parking along Petrified Forest Road with the building with a safe access road, access path for pedestrian. We also can add bike racks around the building. We have plenty of places to add those. Property dedication. The developer is proposing 17-feet property dedication for the improvement of the street if required, and it's, the improvement of the street will be included in the cost of the project. The applicant will pay for that. The proposed building includes two 1,500-square-feet retail, one facing Foothill Boulevard, and the other one is facing Petrified Forest Road. And behind these two spaces, we have the convenience store, which is 2,300 square feet. We will propose, this is a conceptual landscape plan, will have variety of native trees and ground cover and shrubs as required by the city of Calistoga. The architecture of the building, we used the craftsman-style building. We also considered breaking the mass of the, oops, sorry, of the building into smaller masses with variety of roof height and setbacks to give the development the appearance of building overtime. This elevation is Petrified Forest Road, and the elevation, the bottom of the page here is Foothill Boulevard, which show the canopy recessed in the back. This is the other two elevations. This is the interior elevation facing the canopy, and then this is the south elevation showing the, one of the plazas and the retail building. This is a street intersection view from the corner. We basically, you can see here the variety of the material we are using and the variety of the roof heights and the tower to anchor the plaza at the intersection. And we use this element for reasons such as, you know, it's a focal point for the plaza, identify this project as a gateway to the city, and it's also a historic architectural element that gives the development the feeling that it is built over time and also signify rural and architectural architecture. This is another view from Petrified Forest Road, which show the plaza here. Another view, this show the canopy, the interior view of the gas station. Okay, and the president with us is the owner of the gas station, the developer, and he's here to answer any question regarding business. And also, we have a traffic engineer that did a study on the intersection, and he is here to answer any traffic-related questions. With that, I conclude my presentation and here to answer any question you might have.
Thank you very much. Before I open the public hearing, any questions from Commissioners of the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Wilks.
In the, what we heard last August in the presentation, you had said that there were, you were going to include an EV charging station. Was, is this also in this plan?
Okay, so as staff stated, this is a conceptual level. We have not, actually, we included it. Let me go back. There is one. Let me go back to the site plan. Okay, so this is an, this is an accessible EV charging station over here.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Yes, we included, but we might need to include more because of the number of parking stalls. So we're, we need to comply with requirement of the Green Building Code in the formal settlement.
Okay, thank you. Any other Commissioners, any questions? Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up. And I would ask if the folks that come up and speak, I have a lot of cards here, so if you could try to limit yours to, it says three minutes, maybe a little less if you could. If not, I guess that's okay. We'll be here a while. And please, no applause, you know, just so we can kind of move it along here. I would like to hear clearly what everyone has to say. And that being said, if I mess up your name, I'll apologize right now. Some of them, the ink ran out when they wrote their names, so I'm kind of going to do the best I can. So the first one I have here is Kim. Is that Sumrum? 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 Did I get that right? Kim? Yes. Well, it was sort of yes.
So my name's Kim Sumrum, and I live at 2333 Foothill Boulevard, which is right behind the ARCO across the creek. And I have two things. One, I'll repeat from the last time we had this public meeting, and that is, we can't allow any projects to go forward anywhere near this intersection until the traffic issue is resolved because we don't know what Caltrans is going to propose or what the growth is. They may need to widen that intersection and take part of that lot. And traffic there, all of us residents, including the poor people that live in the trailer parks, have one heck of a time getting in and out of that area. Traffic is one of the major sources of noise in that area. People trying to enter the present ARCO and exit the present ARCO, and people cutting them off and fights and yelling and so on and so forth. And then the other issue is these kind of businesses have a lot of noise. Cars alarms, people shouting, just noise, noise, noise. We get about four hours of quiet time each night, and that's usually interrupted by a fuel truck coming in and delivering, or early in the morning, the garbage being picked up and the dumpster being dumped. So noise is my biggest complaint, and the traffic issue needs to be resolved before we should let anything go forward in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Lucretia Marcus?
My name is Lucretia Marcus. I live at 933 Petrified Forest Road, which would be about 300 yards west of the proposed Loop. My concerns about this are, is then that reading the comments on the staff report, I'm left with the question of why are we actually giving this application any consideration at all? In the denial of the Rite Aid store in 2007, the project was going, was deemed to be going in direct competition with two businesses already downtown. Well, this would be direct competition with three businesses downtown, which would make four gas stations in a community of less than 5,500 people, including kids who are too young to drive. It is, it is also in conflict with not only the urban design plan, but also the Foothill Boulevard up-valley requirements. Both prohibit formula businesses, except if residents were primarily benefit, but not so with the Loop. In the last meeting that we had with Sonny and his people, he mentioned that the commuter traffic is really what is going to make this, make this project a go. In other words, profitable. The up-valley Foothill District specifically names gas stations as prohibited separately and apart from formula business. So how do you define both of them? Or can one be the same as the other? And I think with gas stations, it can. The new design that is up here doesn't really reflect the age and the beauty and the dignity of dignity of Calistoga. We have gotten there through lots of trials. This is, and I dare say to use, to use the word upstart, and it just really doesn't reflect the rural values or the rural design of what we see time and time again in Calistoga. The new design also has flipped the lighting. So, instead of getting it in your face on Petrified, you'll get it coming south on The car wash, I think, is also a problem. It's a twenty-foot tunnel. There are, I think, five air pumps also designed in there somewhere for people to stop and, you know, check on, check their tires. That is directly across from the church. It's open twenty-four-seven-three-sixty-five, including times where there would, where there is a primary school that is situated on the church's property. I just question how safe that is going to be with children there. The noise from the, from the car wash will be heard because of, it's a valley, and the noise goes up. Will be heard by everybody who lives around there, especially those who live in the hills. The convenience store, we asked about what, what kind of material, what was going to be sold there. Beer, wine, some produce, and, I mean, we have a cow mart for that. And not only a cow mart, but we also have the farmer's market on Saturday mornings that attracts people from everywhere. Regardless of the water tower and the board and bat and frippery, the bottom line is that this is a gas station that is, would be one of over thirty owned by the same company. I'm reminded of the saying that if it waddles like a duck, if it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. Ergo, it's a gas station, and I, and I sincerely wish that we denied their application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. Okay, moving on. Colleen McKenna?
Hi. My name's Colleen McKenna. I live at two-four-two-six Debbie Way, Calistoga. I've lived in Calistoga for forty-four years. And first of all, I want to thank you guys, because this is not an easy job, and you put in a lot of time and hard work, so we appreciate that. I do have concerns and questions as well, and I think you're going to hear the concerns. You've already listed them. So, I think I'll just flip on to my two big questions, and those are, how does the Loop help the town of Calistoga? And what does it do for our community of Calistoga? And so, I attended the meeting with Sonny, and he was great, friendly, pleasant, honest, businessman, just, you know, presenting his case. And when asked, why Calistoga? You know, why did, did you pick us, or did we pick you? And it was kind of point-blank, my words, no-brainer. I mean, it's a moneymaker, there's a lot of traffic there, they've done traffic studies to prove that, you know, many, many cars go through on a daily basis. When asked, how does the Loop help Calistoga? His response was that they would be donating their property, some of their property, to put in turning lanes that could alleviate some of the craziness at the corner, but those people still have to get from the turning lane back onto the two-lane road. So, I'm not feeling that that's as helpful. The other one was, what about water? And his response was, we're efficient, we have state-of-the-art equipment, you know, we can really reduce the amount of water used, but it's still, I don't remember the numbers, but X amount of gallons per car. So, many, many cars every day over the next how many years, it's just, that's a lot of water. And, you know, after, you know, we had a great winter, we had a great spring, we had a lot of rain, and that's fabulous, but right after the Four Seasons and the Enchanted Forest, or whatever we're calling them, you know, right after those passed, we went into a horrendous, really drastic drought, which none of us can control and none of us can predict, you know, where, how much water we're going to have available just for the residents of Calistoga. So, and I think people have mentioned, too, the vastness of those two projects. I think people are still reeling from. I mean, they're huge, and we don't know the impact, and yet, they already are impacting the people in Calistoga. So, yeah, a lot of concerns and a lot of questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to try to expedite this process. No, go ahead. I'm going to call up two names, and if the other person could stand behind the speaker, and we'll kind of move through a little faster. Jerry Hanson? And then, I'm sorry, Karen Lynn Ingles?
Good evening. My name is Jerry Hanson, and I live at Chateau. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this issue. I first came to Calistoga for extended stays beginning in nineteen sixty-nine, and this became my permanent home in nineteen seventy-nine. I've witnessed many public forums regarding development of our town. For the most part, we've held strong, those of us who wanted to preserve what we considered appropriate for the integrity of Calistoga, and the tourists still came. Then came the Enchanted Forest, or whatever that development is currently called, then the Four Seasons development. These changes make the old battles to keep Calistoga, Calistoga, seem like child's play. I'm sure the developers of the Loop are very nice people, but we are not their first concern. Their first concern is their own profit, and our city administrators never miss an opportunity to remind us that tourism is the lifeblood of Calistoga. What gets lost in this mix is how these developments currently, this development impacts us, the residents. Whether we have another convenience store or more gasoline pumps is of little consequence to us, the residents. And the car wash? I wonder how many of us have made a point of looking at the Loop in Napa. If you have, imagine, if you will, a somewhat similar installation on the corner of Foothill and Calistoga Road. While the car wash might be a convenience we don't currently have, I offer this. This is not appropriate for our little town. Napa is a comparatively large city. It can easily accommodate such a development with little aesthetic or environmental impact. The same is true for Santa Rosa. This simply is not true for Calistoga. The car wash alone is out of scale for what we have here, and the developer has stated candidly and honestly that without that car wash, it would make no sense for them to pursue the project. Additionally, this will add nothing for the tourists they can't see most everywhere else they might pass through to get to us, regardless of the window dressing. And if for one minute the council or you, the planning commissioners, think this will not negatively impact the existing businesses, residents, and congestion on that corner, no matter how you slice it, dare I say, I believe you are dreaming. Once it is a done deal, it's a done deal. There will be no turning back. Please, please reconsider allowing this to go forward. Calistoga is a beautiful place. Other developments will present themselves. We all want that corner to be cleaned up, but let's keep any development, Calistoga, appropriate. Let's development be inspired by our unsurpassed surroundings, not by what out-of-towners think we need. Without this development, the tourists will still come. Thank you.
Thank you. Cody Gillette Kirk, Kirkham, I believe? Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Karen.
No, that's okay. I'm Karen Lynn Ingles, and I live at one oh eight Ivy Lane. I wanted also to echo what Colleen said in thanking you for the difficult job that you do and, and for hearing us out. I wanted to address first, traffic and safety. We all know how heavy the traffic is, and especially at commute times. I've seen it stretching up at least a mile, you know, when it's been at its worst, going up Petrified Forest Road, coming in towards town. And when people are making turns in and out of, just with the Arco Station, with two stations, and crossing traffic, left turns, people coming in, even if we've got lights, that's going to be a real issue, a safety issue, that I think needs to be very seriously looked at. We haven't seen the traffic study yet, so, you know, obviously, I don't have any more information than that. Another thing is that a fourth gas station, we just don't need. We really don't need one. And, and another market? No, we don't need that either. The current businesses that occupy the property are things we do need, and that I think, you know, it would be to our advantage as a community to encourage them to be able to stay, if we can somehow do that. It's one of only two auto repair shops in town. If we lose that, then it's just Mark Porter. How's he going to help everybody? Well, I'll have to go out of town if we're not already doing that. They're the only tow service that's local. Calistoga Towing is there. And, and you can rent rental trucks. I mean, I've done all those things, and I was just there last week, because they had, as it turned out, exactly the kind of battery I needed. So, I didn't have to drive to Santa Rosa on a charge, you know? Also, the, the car wash, we don't need. And as Jerry was just pointing out, we, we just emerged from years of drought. Climate change is here. The temperatures are going up. We're going to have more years of drought. Thank God, we don't right now. We're not in a drought now, but we know it'll happen. We all, all went through only being able to water our gardens, what, twice a week on specific days, and, and changing to drought-tolerant landscaping. It's going to get worse if we add to the mix, and we already have the two big developments with Calistoga Hills, and, and I keep calling it Silver Rose. That's already going to make a big impact on it. So, I, I hope that you take all these things, I ask that you take them all into consideration, and I thank you for, for listening to us.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Okay. Joe Richards up after Cody?
Yeah, I'm Cody Kirkham, Cody Gillette Kirkham. I live across town. I live on North Oak, but I lived in the valley for forty, forty-five years, in Calistoga for almost twenty. Calistoga was the cute town north of us. We lived on the Silverado Trail. Even now, it is a totally different town. What I wanted to speak about mostly was Shell, Shell Oil, which is the gas company. I, I think that gas is not going to, it won't be the way of the future. It will, it will not be what we want or need. It's, I'm totally in favor of a clean environment. It does not do that. But Shell, in particular, is a really nasty gas company. They've screwed up the Niger Delta, they have screwed up the Amazon, they have never apologized, they have never taken responsibility for what they have done. You know, they're environmentally awful. So, I will leave you with that.
Thank you very much. Catherine Simples, I believe, is, tried to read the writing here? Okay, thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Jerry Shad. I live on Myrtle Street. I've been here for thirty-eight years. I don't have anything really fresh to say, except, is it something we need and how it will help us? I don't believe with three stations already, it's something we need. I frequently go backwards and forwards to Calistoga. Once, I had to wait for a, a gas station to be open. Otherwise, you please straight in. Our needs are served. So, that answers that part. Detriments, I think we had a great response to the plan, and I do appreciate that you've made some changes. However, they're not enough. We talk about traffic. It's horrendous, as we all know. All it's going to do is encourage it. The noise is huge for the people that live locally, and the light pollution. Flipping the station around does not help the light pollution, even if you have downward-facing lights. It's going to be congested. Water, I mean, we don't need a car wash. I mean, my car gets washed when it gets serviced. That's it. Okay, I'm not over proud, but we can't afford it. We can't afford to waste the water on just having a gleaming car. Most emphatically, I don't think this follows a general plan in enhancing the small-town appeal of Calistoga. It's another formula business with that formula water tower. Immediately, they said that, I thought about the one in Windsor. It's not what we need. So, I will leave it at that. It's not what we need, and it does nothing to help the residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't get the second name. Charlotte, you're at Williams? And then, if we could have, boy, the ink pen ran out on him. Is that Tim Rothschild?
Hi. I'll try to keep this very brief, because I did email this letter in to you. So, I, I want to emphasize the left turn problem. It doesn't really matter how many driveways or what services are offered, somebody else always, somebody wants something else, and so the left turns happen, and we know how dangerous that intersection already is with people making left turns into the Arco. And, and the number of private driveways nearby, as, as well as mid-seat drive going in and out of that, that business complex. So, these layers and layers of traffic situations don't need to be added to. I think it sincerely will endanger people's lives, and I think that needs to be avoided at all costs. Also, the, the car wash, the proximity of it to, to properties is going to do nothing but lower property values with that amount of noise operated. It, I think it's an unfair onus to put on nearby property owners. Their, their property values will go down because of that noise. And I want to say in favor of the tow service. It may not be beautiful, but it serves people, and there is no other nearby tow service. So, for anyone who's broken down flat tire, et cetera, on Petrified Forest Road, or on Mount St. Helena, out Knights Valley, in town, and for any of us, like myself, who have locked our keys in our car, and maybe multiple times, you know, let's hear it for Calistoga Towing. They provide a service that no one else in town is providing right now, and we do have three other gas stations and convenience stores. So, thanks very much for the time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Norris?
Hi, I'm Tim Rothschild. I live in Santa Rosa, and I'm here to address the traffic situation. I think if this gas station is allowed to go in, I think between their participation in adding money and financial things to the light situation, if you guys have to put in a light, I think they'll put money in there. And I think if they add, or if you add a new lane in there for churning in there, I think that will actually help the flow of traffic and not hinder it. As far as people going to and from Calistoga, people are going to do that to visit the city anyway, regardless of whether there's another gas station there or not. The water situation, when it comes to washing cars, people are going to wash their cars, whether they do it there or whether they do it someplace else, people wash their cars. And that car wash has, I assume, a way to catch the water and reuse it. So, I think the impact may be less than what people might think. I wash my car regularly, and I do it on the driveway. I don't think that's a good way to wash cars, because it doesn't save the, the water. But that's just my opinion, and I just think that, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt Sarkoni? Jenny, go ahead, Jenny.
Hi, my name's Jenny Norris. I live in Calistoga Springs, and I'd like to just take a step back for a minute and say, occasionally, we're faced with choices that have far-reaching impacts, and a gas station is one of these. At our last city council meeting, the mayor signed a proclamation to reduce global warming, and I think that's a big deal. I think we're committing ourselves to that, and I think we care about that as a city. And reducing global warming means reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and Shell Oil is the second-largest producer of greenhouse gas emissions in the entire United States. In good conscience, if we do care about global warming, I don't think the city should allow this. The whole world is moving away from fossil fuels. The whole world is moving away from fossil fuels, and Calistoga really needs to join the rest of the world in this. Besides global warming and not wanting or needing another gas station, there's so many reasons this project isn't right for Calistoga. I've been looking at different studies, and what I've found is that gas stations contaminate a lot. There's a lot of runoff. And they shouldn't be closer than 500 feet to a well, a wet land, a spring, a stream, a river, or a pond. And I'm not sure that this meets that criteria. As far as air and health impacts, one of the studies I found was a 2003 study conducted in France that documents a significant relationship between childhood leukemia and living near a gas station. And I think that the homes near there have children. I know there's a church nearby, and I believe there's a Highlands Preschool right near that intersection. Looking at ethics, it's already been mentioned, but Shell's environmental and human rights record, besides being the number-two largest producer of greenhouse emissions, their human rights record is a disaster, and their environmental record is a disaster. And it's been condemned by the United Nations. There's a lot of problems with this project with traffic, noise, and nuisance. We've been hearing that. Another problem is it's gonna be open 24 hours. That means it's gonna be more vulnerable for robberies, despite what they say about security cautions. I'd just like to close with another thing. It might seem trivial, but it kind of bugged me at the last community meeting. Somebody mentioned about poor Yelp reviews for the Loop projects. And what Mr. Goyle said is the Yelp reviews shouldn't be cherry picked for each negatively reviewed store. There are positive reviews. And I find that to be a bit misleading because the last two days, I've spent hours looking at every Yelp review. There were a total of 670 Yelp reviews for roughly half of the Loop locations. I tabulated every review, and I did not cherry pick. The negative to positive ratio was eight to one against the convenience stores and three to one against the gas station car washes. So what that means is there were 277 reviews for the convenience stores. Out of those, only sixteen were rated good. I consider four to five stars good. A hundred and thirty-nine were bad, one to two stars. One's as low as you can get. Three hundred and ninety-three reviews for the gas stations, gas station car wash for the Loop. Out of those, only sixty-three were good, and a hundred and eighty-three were bad. The bad reviews, there are many complaints having to do with poor or rude customer service, overpricing, unsatisfactory car washes. These were the ones that were repeated over and over again. Others had to do with things like cleanliness, or the loud video voice ads on the pumps. Now, I'm not suggesting that Loop gas stations and stores are worse than others, but these reviews do reflect the business. I feel like we have an opportunity to make a good choice, a healthy choice for our town, for our future, and for our greater environment. We have the opportunity with this to live up to our proclamation against global warming. We rarely have opportunities to make impactful choices like this. Let's go in the right direction and choose something positive. We don't need this project. Let's aim higher. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally, and I apologize, I can't quite make out the last two letters that you put down, so I think there's only one Sally. So you're up next, whomever you are.
I'm the...
You made yours.
I'm the...
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, then Penny Worsham?
Okay, my name is Matt Sarcioni. I live on Iris Drive. I have a lot of concerns about a lot of aspects to this proposal. The traffic, people have talked about, the use of water, even gray water reused over and over again. Twenty-four-hour convenience store sounds a lot of alarms to me. But my most importantly for me is that few among us doubt that climate change is real and threatening to our lives. We as individuals need to factor this reality into our choices, and we must do this as a community as well. In my opinion, the last sort of business we should throw support behind is a gas station. We cannot fully acknowledge the role fossil fuels play in the threat of climate change while simultaneously enabling and supporting yet another fossil fuel station here. Our small town already has three, and I just don't see the need for another. We must wean ourselves away from this way of thinking and reject the Loop proposal. Environmental proclamations are nice, but let's put some teeth behind them. Nothing is forcing our hand here, except rising seabeds and melting glaciers. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Laraku?
I don't have a prepared thing, so it's coming from my heart. My biggest concern is the traffic. Where I see on the diagram here, the driveway going in and out is right across from Arco. Several times, I tried to come out and make a left-hand turn to go up Petrified Forest, and even though the Arco has, you know, that thing that says stop, or whatever it says, people don't do it. I can tell the locals from non-locals. The locals will stop for you, the non-locals won't. And I find that very concerning, and also coming off of Tubbs, and if they even put a driveway coming out onto Foothill, here again, we have the potential of automobile accidents. My biggest concern is after we had our fires, and then the Butte fires, and that I had read an article that they only had three ways to get out of town. We only have three ways. Either go up 129, 128, go down 29, Petrified Forest. Those are the only ways that if we had another devastating fire like the Tubbs fire, we would have no way of getting out of here. My other concern is the 24 hours. I moved up here from San Jose. I've seen these all over San Jose. It does bring a type of element in the middle of the night that I don't think is appropriate for our little town. Whether they come from somewhere else, it's open 24 hours. And I've never seen a gas station car wash that close to residential. They just built those new houses that are right up against where the tow company is now. So I think that's a big concern with children, the pollution, the light pollution, the noise, all of this. And I'd like to, Lucretia said, my other biggest concern is, and this has been my concern about the other projects as well, is it's in the books, it says no formulas, no formula businesses. I don't understand, just like Lucretia, how this was even considered. And I think that's something that we as the locals and as residents of Calistoga, we need to know why. I understand that the commission has to accept all proposals, but why accept a proposal, take it this far, that is a formula business? It's a waste of their time, it's a waste of your time, and it causes us a lot of stress. So I hope that this does not go through. I agree with everybody else, it is not appropriate for this small town. It belongs somewhere else, not here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one last person, Matt McMurray, I believe it is?
Hi, point of order from me.
Yes.
In terms of whether I should speak or not. I do not live in Calistoga, but I work in Calistoga. Does that permit me to speak?
That's perfectly fine.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I do work 2102 Grant Street, which is the Calistoga Seventh-day Adventist Church. I'm the pastor there. My issue is the traffic. But I have an idea that is beyond what we're talking about here. I did talk to Hamid about this idea, and then afterwards sent him an email about modifying my original idea. And I think that in terms of traffic, we need to look at a paradigm of traffic flow completely different than this intersection that we have here. And so what I'd like to just posit today for a long-term solution to a lot of our problems, wouldn't solve all the issues that everybody raises here, but if you imagine this property and the Arco property at the center of a traffic pattern that would go around them, so it'd be like a large circle, but it couldn't be in the shape of the circle because of the properties. And can I walk away from the microphone to show something?
Absolutely.
Okay. I guess I have to face this way. The idea is to eliminate this part of the road right here. Shift this property over to here, and open up a road back here. That moves this property and whatever's on it away from the houses that are next door. It would also mean building road around the other side of the Arco, but it would mean there would be environmental issues there because of the creek. And Hamid said that you would have to, whatever you do there in terms of road, you have to build it on pillars. You're into a big cost issue. But if you really want a progressive issue that will help the town be the way it is, and yet have the traffic flow, and with traffic backing up a mile, I don't know how far it is on 128 in the morning, but the idea for traffic flow is to keep the traffic always moving. So it eliminates the traffic light. It would be a trade of the right-of-way of here to over here with whoever is the property owner. And it will allow the traffic to move in such a way that it goes around these two properties without having to stop. And the most ideal would be two lanes, all going clockwise. If you're going down here, it would be going like this around the two properties. It would also make it easy for the people in the mobile home park to get out easier because it's, they only have to consider the traffic going one way. And I know this would have a lot of challenges to it, but I just wanted to posit that with you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's all the cards. Is there anyone else out there that did not fill a card out that would like to say something? If so, could you please line up, I guess, because I don't know your names, just come forward? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Grahlman. I live at 7775 Friends Valley Road, so I'm a little bit out. But I just that Calistoga is such a special place. And I was just actually back there just reading the mission statement, and it talks about the goal of the City of Calistoga is to maintain the small-town rural character and to maintain its authentic charm. And without a doubt, if somebody were just dropped into this proposed design, then opened up, blindfolded, opened up your eyes, you would be anywhere USA, anywhere mall USA. And I think that that is basically contrary to everything that your mission statement stands for, so I think, I would hope that it will stay true to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, yeah, if you'd like to, you're welcome to.
Dennis McNae, 2653 Foothill. My concerns are kind of safety issues. About ninety days ago in Virginia, a car crashed into a tanker refueling a gas station, caused 20,000 gallons of gasoline to leak. Now, how the Arco ever got a permit to be within 500 feet of an active stream that runs right through the center of Calistoga, would you imagine how much damage 20,000 gallons of gasoline would cause running down that creek? And you're gonna put another one right across the street where the storm drains drain into the creek? You know, it doesn't happen very often, but every once in a while, a car will run into a refueling tanker, and that kind of causes a bad scene. The other issue is, I have an acre of wine grapes on my property. I am within 1,500 feet of that preschool. I can no longer spray sulfur on my grapes because California has outlawed that as a dangerous chemical, even though it's organic. Now, I just wonder, how many schools are right next door to a gas station? Have you ever thought about that? I'm sure there's some record of it somewhere, but I doubt if there's many right next door to a gas station. That's my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. One last time, anyone else? Placido?
My name is Placido Garcia, 1127 Mixit Drive, Calistoga. I just, I'm here because my main concern is that we don't need another distraction in that corner. We got plenty already. We got plenty, a lot of traffic problems right now, conjecture. Plus, why do that? Looking for a more problem, make it bigger. I don't see any reason why we're supposed to do that. But it's coming another project too, in the corner, in that area, maybe 500 feet from the center around. And we have another problem, houses coming over there. The one, traffic light, traffic is not going to be a solution. I don't wanna talk about traffic light right now, I just wanna talk about, I oppose Loop, with that big reason, for me, it's a big reason. I hope to the members of the planning commission, before decide something, put the ceilings to the Calistoga in the front, before you decide something. And I hope, you can see a lot of people who are opposed, why are here, we are here right now. But the maintenance, I'm sure there's more people. But we are here for that reason, and do and approve something good for the town, not something bad for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Placido.
I'm the applicant, so I don't know if I can...
Yes, I'm gonna ask, yes, yes. No, no, if there's no one else, I'm gonna ask you to come up. There's a variety of questions. You're welcome to address at your selection, or I've got a list a mile long, and they're pretty, I'm sure they're pretty close to being the same. So if you would like to try to address the concerns of the community, please.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to first of all introduce myself. I'm Sonny Goyle with AU Energy. I'm the applicant. So our family has owned and operated gas stations. When my father started the business in the late seventies in San Bruno. And we've just, so we're born and raised here, local guys relatively to the area. I kind of wanted to give kind of an overall, you know, explanation as to why we're doing what we're doing. There's obviously an element that we need services that are being used today. So gas is being purchased today. But it is a business that is a declining business. But it does offer an opportunity, wherever we put locations, to say, okay, it's going down slowly, and it may be 20 years, but it subsidizes the ability to do other things. The CEC is putting in hydrogen, California Energy Commission, for those who don't, who aren't familiar with the term. They're putting in hydrogen stations out there. There are hydrogen cars out there. There are EV cars out there. And there are all these other alternative energies coming out, but those are not viable, sustainable solutions. So we're gonna, we believe that we're getting to a point where we need to find locations, areas, services that we can put a blended offer over the next 20 years. So today, this property would be, you know, used as a gas station, but over time, we can add those other services as they become viable, as they become necessary, and there are more cars of those types on the road. Existing facilities don't have that flexibility. They were built 40 years ago, 30 years ago. They were much smaller properties. 30 years ago, they were much smaller properties. The zonings won't allow for it. The space won't allow for it. So this is an opportunity for us to say, okay, look, things are coming. We get it. We understand it. But how do we plan for those? Whatever the mode of fueling or transportation is going to be, how do we sustain properties? And so, yes, car washes do help subsidize that effort. The convenience stores do subsidize that effort. The fuel today and the profit of the fuel help subsidize those efforts. So just as our taxes help pay for the CEC's initiative to pay millions of dollars to put hydrogen facilities out there, so too, we look at it on a very small level of how do we do it over time? So I did want to just kind of throw that out there as to why we believe that, you know, yes, it's a gas station today, but look forward, look beyond. This is, from a density perspective, only 20% of the allowed coverage. When I think it talks about building area. Is that correct statement? Okay. So so it does, the property does allow or have the space to make those modifications over time, since we're not putting a maxed-out buildings on the property. So that was one point I kind of wanted to make. With regards to, you know, the other issues, whether it's noise, lights, hours of operation. With regards to noise, we meet all the standards that the city imposes on noise levels at the property edges. Every time we get a study done or a test done at the end of our projects, we are less noise than a car driving down the street. So we do our effort to make sure that those are mitigated and that we meet all the standards, whether whatever those standards are. And the systems do meet that requirement. Light as well. They meet all the requirements and all the standards that the jurisdictions impose with regards to those standards. Hours of operation, this is preliminary, so we really haven't had a you know, actual conversation over the restrictions on it, but there are sites that we do restrict the hours of operations. There are sites that we restrict delivery hours. There are all ways of kind of managing those elements where there's no deliveries after 9:00 PM. The sites shut down at 10:00. We like to leave the lights at least dimly lit because of slip and fall issues, because of the liability issues of accidents happening on our facilities. So that's why we do like to have a little bit of light at night. But again, those are all issues that we believe can be addressed to a degree. Sorry, my notes closed off on me. Water. Yes, our car washes are environmentally friendly by the standard, by those standards, because it's better to wash a car at a car wash than it is to wash a car on your driveway. We reclaim it. We process the water. We pump the sludge. It gets sent to a treatment facility to get handled properly for the environment. I guess if you don't wash your car, then, you know, but if you do wash your car, as I do once a month, then I do use these types of facilities for that purpose. But that's the most environmentally friendly way to wash your vehicle. The most, of course, being don't ever wash your car. But we're not really seeing that happening in the market. So we talked about traffic. We're willing to work with you guys on the traffic issues. We've left space to help address those issues. So that's a conversation that we're willing to have. And we believe that doing nothing won't solve the problem. So, you know, being a partner in addressing the traffic issues in the corner can do that. Gas stations are, and I have a traffic engineer who can speak to that, but they can speak more to, do we generate traffic or are we taking traffic off the road? Or all the trip-level stuff. So if you guys would like to ask some general questions, he is available for questions as well. When we compare ourselves to existing gas stations, all I can say to that is, is existing gas stations were built to the standards of the time. So traffic studies probably weren't done. Parking studies were probably not done. Traffic, you know, flows are different than they were 30 years ago, 40 years ago. So we find that our facilities don't have the same level of impact that we see currently. So when we're comparing the two, we always find that, you know, we have to always take that into consideration as to the time it was built and the circumstances and the requirements of those times. And we believe that today's requirements are a lot more stringent and address a lot of those issues. That was basically all that I had, but, you know, I just kind of wanted to be able to explain why we're why we're even here, why we're proposing some of the uses that we'd like to put. Why we're, you know, we've modified it to try to incorporate local community needs with the open spaces, with the with the additional retail spaces to allow that. Tucked everything as best we could, hidden it as best as we could, yet still allow for those services.
Okay. If you would stay at the podium, I'm going to close the portion, the public hearing portion now, and you remain there and I will ask if the commissioners have questions of the applicant and we'll go along and you can answer those?
Absolutely.
Okay, Commissioner Wilk, would you like to start?
Yeah, I just have one question. There's one of the things that we've heard pretty success, successively tonight and also we heard last August was, why do we need a fourth gas station? And, and everything, of course, that that talks, that backs that up is, I, has to be anecdotal. I don't think anyone is here has actually, you know, contracted for a study. I have to imagine that you did some amount of market analysis to determine what your market was. Can you help with that at all?
Yeah, so we, you know, we believe that there's enough traffic on the area. There's enough need for the services. There's a need for things to be brought to current driving standards and current vehicle styles and traffic. And so that we felt like that's an, that's an underserved area, you know, frustrations that people have going to gas stations today, you know, there are there. There are, when you look at the older locations and...
Is that based on some sort of study or is it data-backed or is this just your general feeling?
Our general feeling, our general understanding of markets, being in the space that we're in. We, we see this all the time. We see communities all the time where we, they're either underserved in certain areas or they're they're, they're just chugging along with the current standards because of things being built so long ago. And we found that, you know, the, the, there is a need for cleaning some of that up. And taking the old.
Thank you.
Fixing it.
Commissioner Cooper?
Nothing. No question.
Can you talk to the addition of the retail spaces? I understand that the restaurant was eliminated and there was a lot of challenges associated with that. How are the retail spaces supposed to add to the project or solve any of those problems? Or what do they offer from your perspective?
So from our perspective, the retail offers the opportunity for either local people to come and open shop there, to provide services that they feel that the community could enjoy. And we put those front and center. The restaurant we took out, we don't operate restaurants. We don't, you know, that was just a, we, we, when we looked at it, we thought that the market and the community could use one. If that's not some, but that was what we didn't hear. So we were fine saying, okay, look, if that's not what you guys need or want, we have no problem, you know, yanking that out and reconfiguring it. The retail spaces are really just a platform to allow for it to be used, whether it's temporary pop-up spaces that somebody's wanting to do an art show or whatever, you know, space they want to use it for. But it's really, we're really open to what those spaces are used for, because we won't be using those spaces.
So they're not necessarily vital to the business plan of the property. They're just filling a...
They're actually just, yeah, meeting the, you know, from our perspective, they're helping to meet the community needs as providing space for them to do and to use them as, as need be. They're not they're not a financial metric, I guess. So to help with that. That's really just there as a as a benefit from our perspective.
Okay. Well, it is time, I believe, to get a consensus. I don't believe this is particularly a vote. If I'm right, staff, just a consensus as to whether we...
It wouldn't necessarily be a consensus. It would just be helpful to go commissioner by commissioner and give input on the design and/or the issues to provide guidance to the applicant and to staff as to whether they should proceed with a formal application or whether, based on your comments, it wouldn't be favorably received. Or if there are further design tweaks, that could be done.
Very well. I'll start with Commissioner McNair.
All right. It's obvious to me that the layout is much improved from the last version that we saw. It seems to do a much better job of, of addressing the site needs and handling the setbacks and the visual concerns associated with the corner. But the part that I'm still struggling with is the scale of the structures on the site. It still feels very large and that's one of the reasons I was asking about the retail spaces, if they were if they were necessary, because they do bulk up the mass of that front structure significantly. And then for, for me, the combination of materials is overwhelming. And I think what I'm looking to see is if we're discussing the design that's proposed, we want to use the words unique and quaint and rural. And it's hard to use those words when we're discussing this, this design. I'm thinking about something without aluminum storefront style glazing or something without the towers that are typically seen in, in the strip mall style development. And then lastly, the hardscape. It seems like there's an awful lot of hardscape in the renderings. When you added up the landscape design, that helped a lot. But I'm not sure that this is a pedestrian hub or a place where people are going to be mingling outside or or being active on that corner. So I feel like from my perspective, I'd rather see landscaping in place of a lot of that hardscape that's across the site throughout.
Commissioner Cooper?
Well, it's all of these concerns have value and merit and I wholeheartedly agree with them. In most cases, our hands are tied as planning commissioners. If a project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning codes, then at best, we can provide guidance for design. In this case, clearly, it is a form of the business. And we have the ability to make exceptions depending on a variety of, of solutions. And if, if everybody here was jumping up and down for joy for a project, then I think we would all sort of do our best to find ways to make those exceptions. But I, I think the community has spoken and I personally would not be able to support this as, this project as it stands.
Commissioner Wilk?
I have, I would like to split my comments into two different sections. One is understanding that this, you've come and presented this as a means of input relative to the, your actual design. And so I'd like to speak to that. And then beyond that, talk about then the project vis-à-vis the existing community plans and, and, you know, what the concerns are of the community and things like that. So I'd like to sort of bifurcate those things. And my comments on the actual design, once again, Commissioner McNair has proven that not only we're both architects, but we went to the same university. My first comment is, there, you have an abundance of detail in this building complex that would not otherwise be in, in sort of a more rural architectural setting. And, and it is more similar to what one would find pretty much in any suburban sort of, of complex like that. And so it actually would be to your benefit to simplify it and make it less, less detailed, less complex. You have an overabundance of materials. And I would say, boy, you know, cut back on, you have four major building materials just on the siding and, and that could easily be reduced. And, and then I would say you have an overabundance of colors. And again, that is sort of mirrored in the typical suburban sort of, of shopping experience. Rural buildings tend to be more or less one color because then they only have to buy one color paint. And, you know, things like we've got the brick, well, I think the brick could be nice. But if you were going to do that, I would say, you know, do a sacked finish on it. So that by the day you're done, it already looks 50 years old. So there are things you could do, but, but I'm, I'm suggesting that you can actually simplify. It's hard to say as, as someone who's a designer, but you could actually simplify this and make it less fine. And it would probably be, speak better to what is the existing ethic here in, really in the, in the whole valley. Your watchtower was what you call a watchtower, which is clearly a water tower without any water in it. And my first reaction was it was such a gimmick. I will have to honestly say, I think it's kind of neat. But, but it is a gimmick and I'm not sure that more landscaping wouldn't be better there, something like that. I have a number of observations on your site layout. First of all, I have one sort of traffic move, vehicle movement concern relative to your driveway as an offset to Mitzi Drive, which is across 128. It's an awkward offset and invites left-turn head-on collisions. And I'm, I'll be curious to know how that would be mitigated throughout the design. Mitzi Drive is not going anywhere. And, and so that is just one practical concern I have. The the overlay plans for that area call for increased setbacks. And you have complied with the zoning code in your proposed setbacks, but only just. And what is in the overlay suggests even greater setbacks. And I'm thinking specifically of the commercial building there on the corner. And I'm thinking that, that if if some of the commercial space became sacrificial, that would actually have a dual benefit. Is that it would also allow for a larger setback from that eventual, eventual redone corner. In the same way on 128, the, the landscape islands that you have that are on either side of the, of the driveway ingress and egress, I think could be wider. And I think that you could do that and still make your trap, your, your vehicle movement work there. Beyond that, I'm, in, in the best of worlds, I'm not sure that you couldn't move the whole gasoline canopy eight or 10 feet away from 128 and still make your, your tanks, your underground tanks and everything work. But that, that is, you know, past my pay grade to make that judgment. The landscape pockets that you show sort of around the corner are essentially just pockets in the pavement. And I think that given the guidelines for this rural entry into town, it's going to need to be something significantly more than that. And I concur with Commissioner McNair that you've got a lot of pedestrian space out there that probably will never get used and would be best, best perhaps put to more plants. Obviously, we have to be cognizant of the fact that it's a corner and we have visual concerns for, for the vehicles. You seem to have, I had noted, you know, the need for a very solid and substantial landscape barrier between petrified forest and your parking, but it appears that you're, you already are, are thinking about that. already are, are thinking about that. So those are sort of my concerns relative to the specific design. And I will concur with, with Commissioner McNair that I, that when you were here last August, I think, I think you listened to what we had to say, and I think you tried to respond to that. And so I, I think that you, in a lot of senses, accomplished a lot of things, and, and I thank you for that. I, I think that you still have some things that are, don't require a white sheet of paper, but it's things that still need to be tweaked and, and thought about. The community plans element is really just a couple of things, but first of all, I recognize we have in the general plan, we have the petrified forest gateway, which is an overlay. And then we also have the up-valley foothill corridor, and of course, we have our zoning code, of which you're in compliance with. The gateway plan and the foothill corridor are arguing against one another in one sense. The, the gateway, the gateway overlay specifically calls for this area, this spot, to be not only commercial, but to be vehicle-traffic-related, to serve vehicles. And, and it's very specific. It says that specifically in, in that plan. In the corridor plan, it actually says that the corridor shall not include gas stations. So there's a, there's a policy difference here.
It goes on to say if they have a, if they have a retail strip center appearance.
Correct. All right.
So, where is it? Thank you. Gas stations are prohibited in entry corridors if they have strip retail characteristics.
Okay. So anyway, we're, we're, we're left with this, where the, the general plan is, is, is actually calling for this sort of use. The, and, and what the general plan speaks to is the fact that this is, this is a, a traffic corridor, which is largely handling people not in Calistoga, but traveling from one place to another. And, and so I, again, that, that makes for a difficult question, even though it is the gateway into our, into our town. The only, the other thing relative to the formula business, and I will reiterate that formula businesses are allowed with the exception of restaurants and lodging. They are, but they are, they're allowed with a use permit. So the general thinking that formula businesses absolutely unquestionably are not allowed is not correct. Having said that, for my standpoint, I don't have a problem with a national gasoline being, knowing what gas I'm buying. So if it's Shell, it's Shell, or if it's, you know, 76 or somebody else. I probably would have a problem with, for instance, signage and such for your own loop. And, and it could be that that would need to have a more site-specific name, and it doesn't really hurt your business plan. So from that standpoint, and again, this is just my own, my own thoughts. So I would say if you, if you decide to move forward, you know, those would be my comments towards it. The only other thing I would say relative to staff is if you decide to move forward, I think you have heard tonight a number of legitimate concerns in terms of, of the potential scoping of some potential specific studies that may or may not need to be done. Taking this proposal into consideration with what will soon be a finished design for, for the intersection and, you know, some other things that may or may not be going on. So I think that there's going to be a, a need to really tie down some scoping and, and get some input in, in that. So that's, that's my comments.
Okay, thank you. I was not, excuse me, I was not here in August. I was on vacation. So, and I'll be very clear, if I would have been here, I would certainly would have discouraged you from coming back. The reason for that is I was on the city council when the general plan was adopted. I was one of the folks that tried to, to protect our community from this very thing. It doesn't fit well with me as an entry corridor, as something, a business that we need. It really doesn't meet the locals' needs. We have three gas stations. I, I just don't see that there. And if you've ever been in the, I'll call it the petrified forest rush, and that's a contradiction in terms, let me tell you, and I get caught in that two or three times a day, I just, it just doesn't work for me. I know studies say a lot, but until you've experienced it, it just doesn't work. I have a really big problem with commuters and visitors to help them out and create more congestion for us, and that's what's going to happen. That's, that's the bottom line. I have had so many people talk to me in the last month about this application, and I haven't had one person support it. And we are here, I am here, anyway, I'll speak for myself, and I'm sure for the commission, that we're here to, to be fair, but at the same ti, time, we need to listen to the people that live here and what they go through every single day. So based on that and the general plan and, and what it, what I believe it says, I don't feel that you have the ability to, to meet those requirements. So I wish I would have been here in August, I would have said that then, for what sway that would have had, I don't know, but I will have a very difficult time supporting any kind of a gas station there. Okay, then, you have the response from the commissioners. I guess you can, you can certainly come back, talk with planning. You have, of course, the right to take it to the council if you so desire.
No.
But, no, you do not, not on a design review?
Not in a conceptual design review.
Okay, so there, there you go. I, if you have questions, you're certainly welcome to ask us now if you want, but I just personally don't see that I could support this project at any time.
Okay. Thank you for the time.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to H matters initiated by commissioners. I have just one thing. We lost a very wonderful gentleman in this past week, Tom Pelter. Many of you know Dom, and my condolences out to his wife, Tammy, and family. They all grew up with us here. I've been here 43 years, and he was here before the commission a month or so ago. And I just want from myself, and I'm sure the commission, to send out our best wishes and prayers. So he will be missed. Any other comments from commissioners?
I, I will add that we also have our fearless former chairman recovering from a bicycle accident, Jeff Manfredi. And so I think that on behalf of all of us, we can very much wish him well and for a speedy recovery.
Okay.
And, and in his own words, if he hadn't been wearing his helmet, he'd be dead.
That is correct. I talked to him today. Anything else from commissioners? If not, we'll move to director's report.
I would just like to recommend that you cancel your July 24th meeting. We don't have agenda items ready for that agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I will take, entertain a motion to adjourn to our, I guess our next meeting would be in September.
August, August 14.
Oh, well, I was ready to take my vacation in September, so I might not be here.
You think this is France or something?
Have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.